Incentive-heavy counties realize no appreciable long-term gains in either gross or net job creation. This is largely because the success rate of companies is highly volatile. Some, 96% of companies fail within 10 years, taking jobs and capital down with them like a sinking ship. Incentive programs fail because they do not account for the fact that firms and the returns they are getting on are highly volatile and prone to failure. Policymakers should not trust any job creation projects from a firm seeking incentives or a consultant enough to risk public money in order to just potentially win those benefits. I have a question. I would like somebody, after all the public hearing is done, to please explain. Item number three says, "The expected increased estimated tax market value of the site without the use of tax increment is $13,420." For a 52-plus acre parcel? Folks, that's $250 an acre. How can that be possible? This city is saying...
Time's up. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call. Anyone else wish to speak? 7:50 will close the public hearing. There is no action on this item tonight.
Okay, any comments or questions by the EDA? I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I did tour that site more than once. People in the audience out, and I did not smell any strong odors on the inside, much less on the outside when we drove up. I wasn't even sure I was in the right place. Second of all, job creation, definitely done for ABS. Worked with them. There's other communities looking for these businesses. You look at what we did with Wabash, how many jobs we created there. We worked with Airborne. We have brought so much business to this community that we had to work for. And most, if not all of it, is built on lands that, on land that has not generated property tax for us because it's been, this is school land, so we haven't been generating tax off of that. And most of it has been on city land, which we generated. So why let it sit empty for another 10, 20 years and get nothing for it? Or we can do TIF or whatever we're doing for 10 years, and then after that, we'll be drawing full property tax value. We're bringing in good businesses, and I don't like the term "corporate welfare" because you tell those 100 people at Wabash that we shouldn't do this. You tell the 75 or whatever they have at Airborne, we shouldn't do this. You tell these people that are going to be coming here, working for Barrett, that we shouldn't do this. This is good jobs, good benefits, and a great community, and that's how we get to be great. Anybody else have a comment?
I'll echo that. I think, I think this is one of, I've been at the EDA, I don't know how many years it is now, it's quite a few. This is the best deal I've seen in my whole term on the EDA. Carol's done a wonderful job on this. I don't see how we could turn this down. It would be crazy. Absolutely would be crazy. It's all I have.
Comments from the council?
I agree. I support it. I need to build room for this town. We need jobs. We need new businesses.
My understanding is that the 10 years of TIF, and correct me if I'm wrong, but those, the taxes, the property taxes that come to the city will be used to pay for that property. And then after that, what's the tax on a 10 million, what, how many million-dollar building is this, facility is this? 10?
Yeah, the building.
What are the property taxes on the 10 million-dollar facility? After 10 years, that's going to come to the city. If we don't do this, it's likely that this wonderful company that offers such great wages and such an excellent benefits package will go elsewhere. We need these jobs here in Little Falls. So we really do need to do this.
I'm going to add that if Carol hadn't done, put this together, we probably wouldn't have gotten this company. It probably would have gone to Brainerd or somewhere else. This is a very competitive market for businesses like this. We have to fight tooth and nail to get these heads of companies to come here. I don't think people understand the free market that's out there and how many possibilities there are for companies like this to go other places. So, yes, I think we have to do this. Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Well, just, we, it wasn't discussed this time, but I think it was at the last meeting. Your organization sponsors 100% the healthcare coverage for the employees, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Nobody else answers it like that?
It's also a low deductible medical insurance that is as good as any hospital or clinic. So it's certainly not the cheapest plan that we could choose for employees.
I just, I, I believe we need options, jobs for people to stay here. I don't, I'd like to see the statistics. I don't know. Maybe Mark Derby knows what percentage of our high school graduates we lose out of this community every single year. And I, and I just, I want people to stick around and raise their family. It's more than just looking, the myopic view of that particular building. It also includes them buying homes, paying property taxes on nicer homes, and the water utilities. It's more than just this building.
It's 100 people's livelihoods. You know, and if it's a good living, and they're going to live here, and they're going to build here, just like, just like, like you said, and they're going to spend their money here. And this money is going to stay in the community. Thank you for choosing Little Falls.
Thank you. And a big thanks to Carol, obviously. You're very correct with that, obviously. We, before we even looked at Little Falls, when Carol came into the picture, obviously, our inkling was to look at Brainerd because that's where we're from. It's the only place that we've ever manufactured. And obviously, yes, they were very interested, and we could have gotten the same type of package from Brainerd as well as communities around St. Cloud. But Carol brought so much to the table. We met, you know, the mayor and the rest of the team from Little Falls. And it just felt like the right opportunity. And once that mall started rolling, we basically stopped searching for another site. It just, it felt like the right place for us, obviously. Not that it's not local to us. We're, you know, south of town, Brainers, but it really, we felt it. Felt like it's the right opportunity. It's the right place to be.
No comments from the EDA? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. No motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion made. Please.
On a layer, Mark didn't answer.
I'm sorry. I did know the answer, but since Knopfler retired, we've been retaining a lot more.
Resolution 2018-87, Tax Increment Financing Financing District Number 41. Adopt. So Florida, or John?
Again, Council President, this is the second public hearing that we'll have tonight. So we need to call for the public hearing.
7:59, we'll call the public hearing order.
Dismissed? Yes. This is for the Tax Increment Financing District for the project that will encompass the property that is of interest for Barrett Tech Foods. This is primarily school district property. There will be some additional areas for roadway improvements that are included as well in this district. And we have Jason Murray here from David Johnson Associates to go through the finer details of this. If the project were not to be successful and not move forward, we would just not certify the district. So at this time, if you wouldn't have the resolution, if the resolution's passed, the district would be able to be established. We don't have to certify the district to implement the TIF financing. So it's not, it's something that, still, if there's contingency or concern that the project weren't to move forward, at this time, we're not anticipating that. We're just at a, at a point where other pieces need to fall into place as well. But this being a critical component of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason to get some background on the TIF.
Thanks, Sean. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you're holding this public hearing to the merits of establishing Tax Increment Financing District Number 41. This is an economic development TIF district, which requires, main requirement is going to define that there's jobs and wage creation as part of it. As disclosed earlier, you've heard the project's goal, the number of job potential for this project. And so we clearly believe this will certainly meet the main merits of the law. As part of the economic development TIF district, it is a nine-year increment. The increment starts, the first year full value is anticipated. Based on the current construction timeline that's been provided, we're looking at 2021, 2022 would be the first year of estimated increment to be collected. As part of this TIF district, it is a one parcel TIF district. As John indicated, we are encompassing the parcel currently owned by the school district along with citing some additional roads adjacent to the property for potential improvement. As we currently speak today, we noted in the business subsidy hearing that potential capital costs through this TIF district is about $1,315,000 as part of this TIF district. The potential for use of that currently, there's two obligations being discussed. One is to reimburse the school district for the property. Using increment as it's collected to reimburse the school district over time, over those nine years. And then the second obligation is potentially pay for the outstanding assessment that currently lies in the property. So as we speak today, those are the two obligations that potentially would come from this TIF district. And again, as we move forward, if this project does commence, we will certainly be back in front of the council with a formal business development, business subsidy agreement that outlines these obligations in greater detail. So with that, Mr. President, Mayor, council members, I'll pause my comments on the TIF district. Or if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time too, but I can pause and put the public hearing commence.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll open up for public comment. Anyone from the public push to speak? Go ahead, Rob.
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. It's important for the taxpayers in this city to know that the school district tried vigorously to get rid of the tax, the assessments on the property. There'll be more about that in the future. I oppose this TIF district financing. How the excess TIF program performed matters because home business owners pay a higher share of property taxes when money is diverted to building projects, according to critics of such incentives. If it were true that no real estate appreciation would have occurred in the TIF district but for the TIF activities overlying governments, such as school districts and other special districts, would get the same amount of property tax revenue that they would have received without the TIF district. Unfortunately, these rules set up potentially perverse incentives by allowing cities to claim property tax revenue that might not have received in the absence of the TIF. In TIF, if TIF district expenditures are not documented in detail, observers may also suspect misuse of funds, such as money funnel to political allies, in particular egregious cases. TIF can facilitate unproductive fiscal competition between neighboring jurisdictions, business tax incentives in general, and TIF in particular are vulnerable to overuse if potential beneficiaries can stimulate or a virtual or actual bidding war among competing governments. A business that is considered an expansion or relocation may use the existence of tax incentive programs to obtain benefits or threaten to leave to obtain more, even when the location would be to the business's most profitable option, even without the benefits. Economic theory suggests that under some conditions, such negotiations can reduce economic efficiency. Recent empirical evidence shows that business tax incentives in general are not well-targeted and often do little to stimulate economic growth.
Anyone else from the public push to speak? Anyone else from the public push to speak? Standing on, Robin. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, the design of TIF in many states makes it vulnerable to exploitation by cities, which can obtain revenues that otherwise would have gone to overlying governments, especially school districts. Within individual states and cities, most often, TIF has been used in areas that were already moderately successful, and it has done little to stimulate growth in the most depressed areas. Business subsidies do not generate sustained economic growth. One reason is that subsidies are ultimately funded by higher taxes, which displace private sector investment. Another reason is that areas which become dependent on subsidies can lose their competitive edge and stagnate, just as individuals on welfare tend to stagnate. A better way for distressed regions to spur growth is to reform state and local tax and regulatory policies to encourage entrepreneurship and private investment. The EDA does not have any special abilities to revive growth that the states and private sector do not have. The federal funding of industrial parks, road projects, and other activities through the EDA just adds federal bureaucracy. The EDA also pits jurisdictions against one another in a zero-sum game when subsidies induce businesses to invest in some locations over others. Congress should abolish the EDA. The author also examines additional academic literature about the impact of TIF on school districts and other potential unintended side effects. The report concludes that although the results are mixed, TIF often fails to meet its primary goal to increase real estate development and other economic growth. And as my sign says tonight, do the right thing. There's a lot of empirical evidence to show that economic grants of any type do not work, do not benefit taxpayer. If you don't meet, do your own research.
Time's up. Thank you. Believe me, we'll do the right thing. Third and final call. Anyone else wish to speak?
Story 601, 7th Avenue, Southwest Little Falls. I'm kind of just neutral on this because there's a few things that I'm not quite sure. I drive through town, and we've got help-wanted signs at Falls Fab, out at the old ethanol plant. Airborne has something in the paper all the time. How, how are we helping the people in our community already to supply them with good workers and so they can maximize their ability to manufacture goods, to bring people in the town here when they're already paying their, you know, in their taxes and stuff? Like you say, I'm not against this. I'm not for it either. I need, I'm looking for some answers on, how do we, how do we fill the positions that the current people within our city need help with workers? Along with, you know, are they going to, you know, if this, if they come into town, are they going to, are they going to take workers from these other facilities? And then now that, now that's going to decrease their ability to make product for their customers? I guess I just have, I have something I would like answered.
Anyone else wish to speak? Standing on, 810, we'll close the public hearing. Council discussion? Action for discussion?
You looking for a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I move we adopt Resolution 2018-87.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Knopfler on Resolution Number 2018-87. Discussion? Standing on, Resolution caller, roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
On letting snow charp box and snow removal equipment, towmaster charp equipment. Public push, Greg?
Yeah, this is the extension, the second half of the, the new polytruck that we're looking at. According to recall back in March, we purchased the chassis of the polytruck. Now we're looking at fitting, outfitting the chassis with the snow removal equipment. So we've got a price for a towmaster, an amount of $106,994 for the tax title license. We're asking the council to approve this evening. This is included in our 2018 budget. But we'd like to get this ordered as soon as possible so that we can get it, get it agreed.
Quick solution to the council?
I move to a word.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Paul Myrka. Now, word to bid. Any discussion?
Really quick, Mr. President. Did we get the, is this state bid or?
This is not the state bid.
Okay. And if I read correctly, the blades are coming from here?
That is correct, yeah.
Any other discussion? Standing on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, "Old Business Resolution 2018-81, Accept feasibility report and call for public hearing, surface and utility improvements, Block 22, Water and Power Company Number 2." Greg?
Yeah, this evening in front of you, we got the feasibility report for the petition project. As you recall, there was a little over 35% of that petition to have. Two avenues and one alley, two blocks of what happened, the avenue and one alley to be made. If you look at page 38, it gives you a picture of kind of where that's at. It's in between 9th and 10th Streets on the southwest side of town on 7th and 8th Avenue. So this evening, we are asking the council to call for the public hearing for that on January 22nd at 7:30 here in the conference chambers.
Quick solution to the council?
We're just calling for a public hearing.
Yes.
Correct. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Approve Resolution 2018-81. Any discussion? Standing on, Resolution caller, roll please.
Lundberg, yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
New business. amend city council motion of March 19, 2018. Follow truck chassis, not truck approved?
Yeah, so when we approved the purchase of the poly chassis for our new poly truck back in March, I didn't have on the motion to include tax title license. So the price is the same on it. It's just it includes the tax title license on the, on the piece of equipment. So if we could amend that motion to include that, I would appreciate it.
Solution to the council?
I have a motion to amend, second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Alderman Herka. To approve and amend. Any discussion?
I have a simple question.
Go ahead.
Why are we not tax exempt from something like this?
We are on everything but vehicles, motor vehicles, licensed motorized vehicles.
So 6.5% sales tax and then the title fee.
Yeah, license, yeah. We don't pay the full license. We pay a renewed tax exempt plate license, but we do have to pay the sales tax.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Standing on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, "Pauzy redevelopment authority recommendation, ordinance number 13, 7 series, sale of property. Adam and Roxanne Jalinski, accept, introduce. Laurie?
Yes, Adam and Roxanne Jalinski have made an offer to purchase some property that's a base of two of their property on northwest Little Falls. There is a map included with the purchase agreement. They did offer $5,000 for the property and, and, the map that's included is incorrect. They did make an offer of $5,000 on the property, and the HRA did have a public hearing and is approving or recommending the sale of the property. It is a triangular piece of property that is directly part of the property they own that butts the railroad. It's not really a buildable site. City owns it and it's sitting there, so it makes no sense for us to have that property. We have a need for it. And it makes sense to sell it and you can tax it on the opposite. I apologize if the map is being included. And John was trying to bring that up.
Yeah, it was, we talked about it.
It was, we, we had it actually, two meetings ago, we set off the agenda from the EDA to make the recommendation, and they wanted it to.
I could see the map then.
Yeah.
Where are the different ramifications coming from HRA, not just the city? Because I'm not aware of what was talked about at those meetings. If it was just straight up city-owned property, then I'd be questioning this. Sure looks like a sweetheart deal. Looks like a buildable lot to me. I mean, it's a full block long. I understand it's trinicle shape, but it goes all the way past what I'm assuming is a paper alley.
Correct. It's, it's not quite a full block long, if I remember correctly. And I did talk to Ben, and it is a buildable lot, but it's only at 70% of what the required lot size is. Because of the, you know, the back is very narrow and it's based on square footage, not on just the road, it's on the road right away. Is that an abandoned railroad track? Yes.
And I look, click on that parcel ending, and it looks like 8,000?
Yeah, see, do a measure.
Yes, they own that property as well.
Right. Yeah, and I think if you click on the report showing the property tax, it's like $48 a year. So we can say we're going to get it on the tax rolls, but it isn't going to amount to anything. It ain't amounting to nothing, no. We can't, it's a buildable lot, so.
And they'll maintain it, that is they own it. Correct.
$48 a year, so long the tax rolls, and then we're getting roughly a third of that. It makes sense to sell it, but to me, the price is kind of low. How does that compare to the square footage on other ones we sold to the people looking to build a house for like $15,000, $16,000?
Right, it is, it is less, but again, it's, it's, it is considered a buildable lot, but it's only at 70% of, and I forget exactly what Ben told me, but he said it's like, if you do the measurements and do the setbacks, it's at 70% of what a normal lot would be.
Well, it's a non-conforming lot. Correct?
That's what I understand.
It's not a 100% conforming lot to build on, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. We're buying parcels of land and combining with other ones to make buildable lots, so.
Well, I'll have to take your word for it that it's not a buildable lot, but it sure looks like it should be large enough. I mean, I think the challenge comes in as far as the front footage of that particular lot. That's what, what. lot, that's what, what is the issue with it.
It's bigger than the one their house is on, because the front footage on the bottom, it, it only butts it right here. And that's, that's the problem with that particular lot, we have front footage requirements on it, um, and that's where it comes into play. So, we, you'd have to acquire a right-of-way, put a road in there, because there is no road through there, right?
The road turns.
The road turns, yeah.
But it turns there. Yeah, I agree with the reason, the rule, a little round corner.
Other discussion? Or a motion to introduce? So, it's been introduced by Mayor Zoka. Uh, purchase agreement, independent school district forty-two, Eighteenth Street Northeast, approved? John?
So, this is the, this is the purchase agreement that we have, um, with the school district on the property that is intended for the development for Rare Pet Foods, as I described in the work session. If this, um, if something were to happen with this, with this project development weren't the, weren't successful, we weren't able to move forward, the purchase agreement is contingent upon all pieces of the development coming together, so we're not, we're not stuck with the property if, if we can't develop it. So, this is, it is strictly contingent upon, uh, everything working on in the TIF district would be utilized to, over time, as those increment dollars were collected, that would be used to, to pay off, or pay the, back to school for the, for price of the land.
What's the motion of the council?
A motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Conopla. Approve the purchase agreement with the school. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-three, establish a pay increase for board of equalization. Adopt? John?
Yes, this is the increase from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. The last, uh, salary increase for the board of equalization was in nineteen ninety-four. Um, this board meets typically once per year. Uh, it is comprised of the council president, the mayor, and myself. Um, I am not compensated by this resolution as it's carrying my normal working hours. So, this is, uh, it's very small, uh, very minimal impact to the, this budget.
Thank you. Motion of the council on resolution twenty eighteen eighty-three.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Hanson, to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-three. Discussion.
I need to stand from that, I would guess.
I was just gonna say, we maybe should table this because both Greg and Jeremy are gonna have to abstain, the council president's gonna have to-
I shouldn't have to say, because that's not gonna be my position, moving forward to put an increase.
Very true, very true, so, yes. Twenty nineteen, yes, yes, that's right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution call a roll.
Zilka?
I'm standing.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Burcock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-four, status volunteer firefighter salary. Adopt? John?
Again, this is, uh, we talked about this in the budget, um, timeline. We did some analysis, looking at other, uh, other of our paid-on call fire departments in our neighboring areas. Um, we do call us, call them volunteers, but technically, they are paid.